I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a few comments. Usually I don't give comments at the work session, but as everybody knows, we had Hurricane Ida come through, hit our town pretty significantly. Very damaging rains that actually took out one of our bridges on East Hook Road that's on the border of Putnam County and East Fishkill. So we've been working very hard with this. We're, all the residents are very anxious of what we're going to do, and the immediate fix will be a temporary structure, a temporary bridge placed at the location where the destroyed bridge is. This will take approximately 10 days, weather permitting, of course, and this really is the quickest, safest fix that can be had right now. There are many, many moving parts. Things are always changing, but right now, the fix is 10 days. I've been working with the county executive, Mark Mullenauer, the governor's office, the regional director of the DOT, Lance McMillan, our highway superintendent, my town engineer, every day since the storm happened. The highway department, my town engineer, I, my hats off to them. They've been doing a tremendous job through this whole disaster, and that's really what it's been. The DOT director, Lance McMillan, he's been excellent as well. They worked quickly with my town engineer to develop a very quick, safe plan for the destroyed bridge. Today, Congressman Maloney also came to visit the site. He is pledging his assistance with FEMA. It's important that Dutchess County really gets placed into this FEMA disaster declaration so they will cover the costs. Currently, businesses, homeowners, renters, they're not approved for FEMA assistance. Only emergency protective measures for government response have been approved right now. Today, county executive Mullenauer announced that he will assist businesses and residents directly. The Dutchess County Department of Emergency Response is collecting information through an online portal for residents and businesses that have experienced losses. We posted the portal on our town website, on all our social media pages, on GovDelivery, everywhere. We posted it this afternoon, as soon as we got it from the county, and it's very important the residents fill this out. We need to make sure we get as much dollars declared as possible so we could get into that disaster declaration for FEMA. Among other basic information that will be collected on this online portal for residents and businesses and renters is the type of structure that was damaged, the water depth in the living area and production or business space, loss of damage, cost estimates, and a brief description of losses or damage. The county executive, a big thank you to him. He's been excellent as well through this whole ordeal. He's been on all our calls. He's been communicating with the governor's office with us, with New York State DOT. He's fully committed to helping as much as he can, so thank you to him. The town board tonight, thank you to the town board for all their assistance as well. We've been sending information to all the residents who live on the other side of the bridge, and a lot of times, there's change, the situation changes rapidly, so it's difficult to get all the information as current as it is to those residents, but we're trying. I've been in contact with Woffinger Central School District Superintendent Dwight Bonk. He quickly put in a plan in place for transportation for all the kids that are students on the other side of the bridge, and they contacted each one of those families, so thank you to the superintendent. Also, our police department, been phenomenal as well. They were in contact with Dutchess County Emergency Response and Putnam County Emergency Response in case there's any emergencies on that side of the bridge. They will be answered by Putnam County Emergency until this whole temporary bridge is in place. So thank you to our police department, Dutchess County, Putnam County, for all working together. Also, the highway superintendent has been working with the Dutchess County DPW Commissioner about trying to do a fix on the road on the other side of the bridge. It's an old road. It's a small, narrow road, and it's very tight, so they're trying to do whatever quick, safe fixes that they can now. Dutchess County has, the county executive did indicate that he's willing to spend the money to fix the road even though it's not in our county. We're working with Putnam County and Phillips Town, but whatever has to be done, we're trying. We're trying. Also, I'd like to thank Senator Sue Serino. She's been assisting as well. Her office helped coordinate the DEC permits that we need to work in the stream. We need to get those permits before all this work commenced, which the work has already commenced, so thank you to the senator's office. And like I said earlier, there's many, many moving parts here. It's been nonstop for the week with all these different agencies, but you know, we have to do what we can to help the residents there. It's nice that all these different agencies and all these heads of these agencies are working together. The congressman's office, county executive, DOT, our staff, thank you, thank you for all, all your help. And it's troublesome to see how bad the storm was and all the damage that it incurred, but we will get through this together. And if you need any information, please contact my office, 221-4303. Contact any of the council people. We're here to answer your questions, and if we don't have the answer right away, we will get it for you. So pretty much, that was all my announcements. I wanted to give a brief update. We will be sending out other letters to the residents over there. I've already sent a few, and be on the lookout for that. And please check out our, our social media and our website, or Dutchess County's website for the portal to put all your losses into this portal that they're trying to collect all the information for FEMA, so please look out for that. And with that, our work session, we have a few items to discuss tonight. First will be the American Rescue Plan, the ARPA funding. The federal government has given some dollars to all municipalities to pay back some of our losses from COVID, costs that were incurred with COVID, and we can't, some of these dollars are tied to where we have to spend it. There are limitations, but we can collect for loss of revenues, all the dollars we've spent to combat COVID, and also water sewer infrastructure and IT infrastructure. So we have indicated about almost 500,000 in loss of revenue and expenses. Is that correct, Mark?
That's correct.
So those dollars will be automatically placed into the town's savings account, into our fund balance to pay us back for all of those incurred costs and loss of revenue. The rest of the funds, which will be about 2.6 million-ish, we are going to discuss tonight, possibility, what we could do with those dollars. Like I said, we can use that for water and sewer infrastructure and IT infrastructure, but for us, the water and sewer infrastructure is very important. We have a lot of water and sewer districts, some old, some newer, but all of them can use some fixing, can use some dollars there. So our engineer did have a possible plan of where we could use those dollars. Does the town board see that? It's the ARPA funding distribution, and maybe the engineer wants to give us a little overview of what some of these projects are and how it will help all the districts?
Sure, supervisor. What we tried to do is we tried to spread these funds, you know, across all of our water and sewer systems to give, you know, all these systems a little shot in the arm. We have some, you know, direct plans in place for some of the systems, and other systems, we have to do a little more evaluation. We know they're deficient in some manner, and we know they need some help, but you know, once it's come through, we'll dive into exactly what those improvements, you know, might be. So just starting at the top, a meter replacement. This is in conjunction with a grant that we've applied for. You know, we have a lot of old meters in the districts, throughout the districts, and you have to walk up to the meter to do the meter read. It's very time consuming. If there's a misread, it's difficult because then the operator has to go back and get the read again. Time consuming, and you know, ultimately, you know, we have calls from customers, you know, about their billings, and you know, it's just troublesome to have to go back out physically and get a meter read, not to mention the meter itself may not be operating properly. So we have applied for a grant, and we've just set aside, you know, 7% of the funds to, it is a municipal matching grant, 50/50. The 175 doesn't cover our share, but you know, there's other things, you know, engineering and our own efforts that can go towards that match, but if we don't get the grant, you know, we'll see whether we still want to replace our oldest meters within the town or maybe reallocate this money elsewhere.
So does the town board remember that we tested resolution and had to leave two meetings ago to apply for this grant, and like the engineer said, it was a 50/50 match, so this dollars, the other 50% match, of course, would be borne by all the residents that would get the benefit of the new water meters, not anybody else. So this would cut down on the amount that they would have to pay, so that would be a help.
To give me an idea, hopefully North, we're able to read all those meters. They're drive-by meters. It's a new system, and under 30 minutes, basically just drive right up Route 82, and I think Creamy Road, and you got all the meters in one shot, whereas you got to go by foot to read. Refugee, Fishkill Plains, you got to walk around by foot.
How many do you say?
Roughly 300. So if there's initially, you got to just drive up the road and take another read versus
Time is money.
walking around.
And how many total?
And you know, wintertime, you're walking in the snow, around the side of the house or in the rain, you know, with drive-bys are the way to go, so.
Scott, when you say the old systems, are you including, like, we all know Pine Wood and Dogwood Knolls?
Yes.
Dogwood?
Actually, Dogwood, I believe, has the new meters, because we took that system over and we put, we put remote reads in there.
Which one?
Dogwood.
Hey, can I just?
I'm sorry? Well, not every single meter in the town, but all the old walk-up meters.
Okay.
Well, like you said, Dogwood already has the new
So they would all be unified?
Okay.
The new ones, right.
I just like to
Refugee has old.
Since that's the first thing out of the box, I just like to say it's not just for billing purposes, but the water meters serve an important role in the management of the water resource and to detect leaks that may be otherwise undetected. And obviously, when there are leaks in the system, so when the master meter says you had 1,000 gallons go out, you know, but the other meters that you read say you only used 700, so you're missing 300.
Right.
And that adds to the cost and expense of the pumps and everything else. So it's, it's more than just to make sure a customer is paying. It's also for the
And we're starting to do those audits.
proper management of the water.
And we're starting to do those audits right now, so. We've begun that. We've got some additional staffing. We're starting to do it.
Because a lot of times, people think when you talk about meters, you're just looking at great money. It's, you know.
And you know, sometimes you'll see
It's like, it's in case, you know, something was damaged or whatever, water leak is, everything has to be paid.
Absolutely.
Correct.
We'll see on our reads where the average is 5,000 for the quarter, and all of a sudden you see 20,000 gallons. So it's a little bad meter, you know, but there's things that that come up. Also, when there's closings, and there's a lot of closings, as we know, and you got to do a final meter read, you know, again, the operator has to go and physically walk out there. Oh, they got to just drive down the street, or even our people can just drive down the street and get that.
That's great.
So there's a lot of pluses to having accurate meter reads and quick meter reads.
I'm surprised Central hasn't, hasn't done that on all of them too.
Yeah, I can't speak to that, but they have to walk up to the meters.
I know, they walk up.
Okay, great. That's, that's money well spent.
Another portion is down on Route 52 corridor. We're trying to promote growth down there, expansion. We have our John Jay Sewer Improvement Area that we installed a lift station about five years ago, I think, thereabouts. Even though we have a total daily capacity of, I think, 200,000 gallons or 150,000 gallons a day, that's more than adequate. The devil in the detail is that you're limited by your peak rate of flow. Your peak rate in the morning or in the afternoon, your peak rate of flow, and there is a choke point at local boundaries. So a way to deal with that is you put an equalization chamber in, and it takes your flow. Instead of pumping it all at a very high rate, you can kind of hold it, detain it, and pump it at a slower rate. So our issue is not the total volume of flow, but it's the rate at which we pump at. So, so we're looking at a project to put an equalization tank down there for future, future growth. Revere, Whirly, you know, in the time since we did the map plan report and actually went out to bid, and, you know, in the case of Whirly, you know, we don't have accurate drawings. We're having to do probes to try to find out what a piping is, so we can disconnect the tank and all those things. So we are experiencing cost escalation, so we set aside some of this fund to help, to help cover that, so that the rates don't go up on the residents. Hamlet, we all know, we had the PFA and PFOs hits. We set aside 10% to try to start a project to see about treatment for that. We don't have a great handle. It's, it's a new contaminant and new treatment, so, but we did want to do a set aside to try to further that along, okay, for the Hamlet wells.
We discussed that, remember, board, when we had the experts come to discuss the PFOA, PFOs, and active carbon filtration was a good solution possibly, so it's very costly, so this possibly could help us with those costs.
So since we had that discussion, has anything come up as far as any money out there from the federal government to be applied to this?
Not yet, not yet.
It's not even up to the federal government standard.
It's the state that's still going to reduce it.
The state, yeah, the state.
It would have to be state, but we look, we look for all those dollars. If we can, we'll apply.
We will apply.
We're one of the least affected towns across the river today.
Horrible. Those numbers were skyrocketed across the river, right?
Next on the list is Fishkill Plains Greedy Filter. So some years ago, at Fishkill Plains, we drilled a third well, and while it was a very good producing well, it was under the influence of surface water, and at the time, you know, we didn't want to make the investment in the system to put a filter system in. But, you know, as we're seeing, you know, water being so critical at any time, you're going to have a problem with a well source, being that we know we have a strong yield there. We want to move forward with the Greedy system, because again, that's feeds, Fishkill Plains feeds Refugee, Refugee 2, Revere, Whirly. If need be, we could backfeed back into the Hamlets from Fishkill Plains, so we set aside 10% to move that project along.
Scott, what is Greedy?
Groundwater under the direct influence of surface water. So in other words, you're not supposed to be drinking out of a pond, basically.
Right, so the water on the ground infiltrates into the casting of the well. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
So when it mixes, then that's, that's a violation with the Board of Health?
Well, you have to have treatment.
Right.
You have to have treatment. You know, you get microorganisms, all
Sure.
things, the bad things that you don't want to bring into the potable water supply.
But you just want the water that's coming from the, all the way deep.
From the ground.
Going up into that chamber, and that's it.
Right, correct.
Okay.
And we do have some systems that have that Greedy filter. Four Corners has a Greedy system. Our new Hamlet system has a Greedy system. And again, we're looking at Fishkill Plains to install one there. Beekman Water, we've talked about in the past, about trying to take a look as more of a regional water supply. We've moved forward with putting out, sending out RFPs to do like a tabletop analysis, desktop analysis. We know the next phase would be to actually drill wells and do pump tests, so we've set aside money here for that next phase.
And the board remembers last month, we passed that resolution for us to study the capacity of Beekman Water.
Yes. Four Corners, we've set aside, you know, 5% for Four Corners. We have a tank repair to do at Four Corners, water tank repair to do, as well as we're trying to redevelop Well 1A. We've drilled another well, Well 5, that we're currently flushing and trying to get, get to a point where we can get the health department to allow us to put those wells online, but there'll be, you know, additional expenses, so we shall see with that, sorry. So we've set aside some money for that. With Cannon Well Field Expansion, we lost four wells here in the Hamlet of, due to the PFA's and PFOs', so we set aside money to drill a third well at Cannon. So that's, that's that line I'm on. We set aside 225,000 just for our smaller systems, Pine Wood, Taconic Estates, Shenandoah, Little Switzerland, for whatever miscellaneous repairs each of those systems might need, and they all need something, you know, and they're small systems, not a lot of users, so even a $20,000 repair hits, hits those people hard because there's not a lot of users in most of those systems, so.
Right, so that's a good, like you said earlier, a good shot in the arm for some of these older
A lot of the things that we've been deferring, because we don't want to raise the rates too rapidly, you know, with everything going.
So we could do the work with this dollars, and then the residents don't have to pay for that.
So Scott, for Little Switzerland, I know that the piping is a big issue over there. They always break during the winter time. Any specific issues that you want to deal with over there?
No, this money is not for that type of project. We have a deficiency at Little Switzerland with chlorine contact time, and it's been on our to-do list, so I think that's something we're going to try to focus in with, with some of these monies. As the way it was designed and built and approved right from the get-go, it doesn't meet today's standards, so. But that other repair job is something else that's, that's out there. That's our worst system for leaks, Little Switzerland.
Yeah, because if you remember, the engineer explained that last time. It was built on rock.
Right on rock. Sometimes when we go to do the repair, we have to hammer out rock just to get the repair cleaner on the pipe. Bad situation there. All of our sewer plants need, you know, been really deferred maintenance upgrades between the blowers, our aeration systems, you know, they're starting to get older now. You know, these things do not have a long life because of the conditions inside the sewer plant, you know, damp and, you know, it's just a harsh environment inside these sewer plants. So I don't have exactly what we'd be doing in each of these systems, but we know that there's plenty to do, so we'll come up with a plan for that. And then the Hamlet, which is our largest plant, we know we have vessel issues that we have to do some repainting on, our, our equalization because our flows. Our Hamlet plant, and I'll get into a little detail, our Hamlet plant was designed for half a million gallons a day, and it has four trains inside the plant. And when all of them are operating, every time the pumps kick on, it's a very minimal surge, okay, because it was designed for 500,000 gallons a day. We're only using one of those trains, so when those same pumps kick on, there's a surge into that smaller channel, and sometimes it kind of overwhelms it. So either we need to go to switch over to VFDs on our pumps to get them to run at a slower speed, or make some other modifications. So that, that's something we're going to be looking to do. And then we did leave 125,000, you know, as an amount to be determined between now and the time we get the funds if something else should pop up or whatever.
That's, it goes fast.
It's, it's great to, you know, give all these systems, you know, we didn't want to, even though each system might have a larger project it needs, we thought it'd be better just to give all the systems and, you know, share as equitably as we possibly could.
It's, you know, it's about 2.5, we, I think it's maybe 2.6, but the money goes very quickly.
Yeah.
And, you know, I rarely, we say this, but thank you to the federal government for, for this, because this directly will help, help our, help our residents. Otherwise, these costs will be borne by the people in those districts, so.
And like you said, Scott, some of these systems, I'm sorry, some of the systems, they have not been revised or looked at since, I mean, unless there is an emergency.
Well, we look at them, and we have a to-do list, and we go over our budgets every year, but it's, you know, they're substantial costs, and you know, if somebody's paying on the order of, say, $500 a year for water, you know, to go to $800 or $1,000 is a
Is a, is a big hike.
Yeah, for them to get double.
So it really limits our ability, so this is, this is a great, you know, thing to have this money to go into these systems. It won't fix everything, but it's definitely a big step in the right direction.
Absolutely. Yeah, this is very good. Thank you. I, you know, it shows distributions for, for everybody who are in these districts, and any comments from the board, any questions?
Thank you.
Or thoughts, any other thoughts about what, what we could spend it on? I mean, we're very limited.
I'd like to give it back to the people, but they won't let us do that.
Yeah, well, so would I, but you can't use it to offset taxes.
Yeah, I mean, we did, honestly, we looked at just expanding systems and using big chunks of this money, but we felt we want to really deal with people that are connected currently right now and try to help those people.
Well, Tom, by giving it back to the people, like, certain systems, like we spoke about, they, they're going to absorb a lot of the cost, so this is like almost giving it back.
I understand.
Because they're going to be spending less, so that's another way of looking at it. They are getting something back.
Better than nothing.
But you usually don't have the flexibility to assign this kind of money to districts, because we can't use tax dollars.
That's correct. That's correct. So this was a, I guess, a crafty way the federal government put the strings attached, but it's working to our favor, that's for sure.
And again, as we get, as we get deeper into this, I'm sure we'll revisit this, have more discussions, and you know, you know, there might be a system that we want to put 125,000 into, and maybe it really needs 250, and we're done, and maybe we'll go and, and have a discussion specifically about how, you know, maybe we have to raise those rates.
Difference.
We're going to match it by this sum of money, but at least we can get some other kind of property done.
Right.
But we have to, you know, we'll continue to work on all these now that, you know, once this is, this definite.
So Mark, you already got this money in the bank?
So we have half of the money now, and we will receive the next half, next summer. And it has to be basically committed or contracted by December 2024, and then the money actually has to be out of our account by December 2026, so. It's not a lot of time to, you know, line all this stuff up and
Yeah, because just about everything here, a majority's going to have to go through the health department, be approved, you know, a lot of this stuff has to go back to the health.
Right.
That'll take two years, you know, it takes time.
Especially animalists like this, yeah, so. And they're going to be getting them from every town. Yeah, you would hope. We discussed that with mayors and supervisors about this, and you know, it's, it's the old saying, the, the smaller towns, really, they get the short end of the stick, because we're fortunate. We have in-house engineering staff and expanded that staff now. Thank God, we hired another engineer in the water and sewer department, because these things take a lot of time. The Board of Health is very difficult agency to deal with, as everybody knows, and you got to have everything precisely and perfect for them, otherwise it'll take even longer.
There's a lot that goes into it.
Right.
There's so much that goes into it, testing and analysis, and you know, DOP, EIs, cross NLTs, there's a lot that goes into it.
Right, and these other
Regulations.
These other small towns that have consulting engineers that do everything, soup to nuts, you know, they're going to get their fee out of here. We're fortunate. We are, you know, he gets paid no matter what, the same salary, so if he's, he has to do extra work, our engineering staff, they, they, they do it, so.
Well, we're not motivated to do extra work.
Yeah, I understand that, but this, we have a time clock here that we got to spend this money.
We're not motivated to do it. We want to try to get it right the first time, but
And we don't want to give any of this money back. We want to use every dollar we can, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's a big undertaking, a lot of work, but it's, we have every confidence there, so we're fortunate. Anything else about that? That's the American Rescue Plan. Next, oh, they'll go right into our next discussion, general water projects. So every now and then, we like to get a little update on what's going on. People see construction on Route 376, and they see water pipe, or, you know, different things going on, so I thought it was appropriate, the engineer goes right into a little discussion about what's, what's going on with different water systems and what type of work we're doing right now.
Sure. So we'll start with Revere Park and Whirly. We've been working diligently at making our interconnections. We have run into delays with certain materials that we need, and once we realized we had those long lead time items, we, you know, we made changes to the system to operate on a temporary basis. Again, everything has to go back to the health department. It's like, you've engineered it once for the permanent, and now you have to go back and engineer it again for the temporary, okay? But we've gotten, gone through all of that. We have our approvals now for Revere and Whirly to make temporary connections through the county. The first connection's going to be done next Tuesday, weather permitting, and that would be for Revere Park. I know it's been a long time coming.
A long time coming.
But we plan right now to go on to Revere first, and then hopefully by our vote meeting on the 23rd, we'll have Whirly connected. We don't want to do them both at the same time in case we have pressure issues or any issues. You know, we have a finite number of staff on our water operator, so if there are issues, we want to contain them to, you know, one system at a time, you know, in case we do have any hiccups along the way. And we might, you know, we're going from one operating pressure to another operating pressure, you know. We could run into some things, so I just ask the people to be patient. If you have problems, contact our water sewer superintendent, Bill Monero, or BRI. Everyone has their number on our bill, but starting next Tuesday, we'll start getting those two assistants connected.
Excellent, that's great news.
Okay. You know, the project we're working on is at Four Corners. We've had, it's been an ongoing process, it seems like, almost for a couple of years now, trying to get Well 1A back online. We've had, it's been an ongoing process, it seems like, almost for a couple of years now, trying to get well 1A back online. We've been flushing that continuously on and off. We've had a problem with the water color. It's not a health-related issue.
A color?
But it's like an aesthetic issue.
Okay, but there's no?
It's not like chlorides or anything or MTV.
Nothing health-related.
Nothing like that, but there is a threshold limit, cause, you know, people get alarmed if there's color in the water, so. What color is it?
No, what causes it?
Stone.
Well, that's a $64,000 question, you know, that none of the experts can tell you exactly where it's coming from. But maybe it's from organics leaching through, you know. It's possible, but we haven't been able to identify it. We've sent it to a lab and all that to try to find out exactly what it is so we know how to treat it. You know, and we've tried bench tests of various natures to try to get the color out, and, you know, we've been unsuccessful. So all we're trying to continue to is flush it, and it has been trending downward, okay? The Health Department will allow us to blend. Problem is they don't want us to allow us 10 gallons per minute, which is what you can get through your garden hose. So it's not even a feasible amount to pump, so. Well, we're trying to work with them, you know, to get that maybe up to 30 or 40 gallons a minute, with the assurance that if it spikes or anything, we'll shut the well off. Health Department, you know, I don't know, in trust us, you know, to do that, you know, but, you know, that's what we've put on the table to say, if it spikes, we'll shut the well off, so. It's one of the things we'll be discussing in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, so the board knows next week we have a meeting with Dutchess County Board of Health to discuss all the different water projects and issues that we've been having. And we're gonna get to the bottom of a lot of things in that meeting, put it that way.
I don't know if I asked this question before, but if this well is not rehabilitated the way the Board of Health wants it to, is it possible, because I know over there the numbers of water to irrigate the?
Very large.
Ground, can that water be used for that purpose and leave the other wells for drinking?
Problem is, it's the same pipe in the ground. It's the same net, pipe network.
Would it cost less than what we're spending now to work a system to separate those pipes?
But you gotta understand, it's almost 300 homes, there's piping on miles of road that you'd have to run new piping. For the irrigation, yeah.
I would say at the source.
No, but you have to get it from the source to each and every house.
It's the same water going into the house for whatever usage it is for the irrigation?
It's a shared piping network right now, so to separate it, you'd have to have a second piping network. And it's miles of piping up there.
How possible to do?
How can that be? You're telling me the tenants, it's a shared pipe?
You have one pipe that comes to your house. From that, it runs your shower, your kitchen, and your irrigation system. It's one pipe that comes in from the street.
So the tenants are paying to water their lawns?
The homeowners.
Really?
And then the HOA pays for the common area. Four Corners and Hopewalk Glen have set up two different structures. At Four Corners, the individuals are responsible to water their lawns.
Hopewalk Glen, it was?
Hopewalk Glen is the HOA, so.
There were separate systems too, because they used to use the pond water.
Well, Hopewalk Glen has a partially separated system. Hopewalk Glen, some of it's shared pipe, and some of it is a pipe that we're kind of renting back to them that was gonna be for our.
Or selling water back.
Selling water back through our pipe, yeah. So. Now, again, at Four Corners, we drilled a fifth well, number five, and we've been flushing that well. You know, we have turbidity in that well, but again, it is trending in the right direction, so it's just gonna take time.
Can you explain what turbidity is?
Well, like suspended solids, you know, very fine, very, very fine, you know, molecules of sand and grit and things like that. And the idea is, you know, you gotta wanna keep flushing the well. It's a brand-new well, it's been drilled into the rock. You gotta keep developing it, basically. Some clean up quickly and some can take a long time. And, you know, you have veins in the rock, seams in the rock, you know.
That water, because of the pressure being old?
And if there's a little bit of sludge or something in there, that gets flushed out, so, you know. Each rock formation is a little bit different, you know, it could take you a couple of weeks, it could take you a couple of years. So while we're, you know, before we drill any more wells, we're trying to exhaust the two that we have right now. Cause drilling wells is an expensive proposition.
So it's like cleaning your arteries. They clean it all out, they pump it all out.
Flush it out, yeah, you put it on, you shut it off, you let it recharge, you pump it again. It's just, you gotta be patient, but, you know, we do have a decent yield out of well pump five. I think we're getting like 50 or 60 gallons a minute, which will take.
So we wanna use that, right?
Which will take, it's, you know, cause sometimes you drill and you don't get anything, you get 10, you know. So, but that's something that we're continuing to do, so.
But part of the issue is in Four Corners is that the irrigation is so vast, the lawn irrigation, that that's what stresses out the system.
Yeah, right, yeah. We use approximately, say, 40,000 gallons a day for potable demand. And when the irrigation's on, we approach 300,000 gallons. And it's on when it rains. Now, we do have restrictions out that we've been using to get through, you know, until we get this resolved. We do have restrictions out. And I think for the most part, the community's been, you know, complying with that.
And usually, what is the cost of drilling a new well over there right now?
I'm sorry?
The cost of drilling a new well?
Well, to drill the well is, say, a rock well, depending on how deep you have to go, because you may go 300 feet, you may go 500 feet. I think the last well we went was 500 feet. So, you know, you could be looking at, you know, 35,000 just to drill the hole. And then there's, you know, setting the pump, pumping, getting the electric to it, monitoring, testing, hydrogeologist. So, you know, at the end of the day, well over $100,000. And then if you have to provide treatment, you gotta hit that cost on top of that.
That's why we allocated some funds from the ARPA money towards.
But, you know, you really, you know, Four Corners is isolated. You don't have options out there, and we need to be ahead of it. We can't wait, cause it takes so much time. From the time you make the decision, I think we made the decision to drill well five probably March or February.
That's why the closest, and as we've been discussing, to have a united East Fishkill Water District interconnect everything. That's why we wanted to explore Beekman Water. There's supposedly an ocean of water underneath over there, the huge aquifers. So that's the closest to Four Corners, I believe, so that will be a possibility in the future. We interconnect those two systems, cause God forbid we have problems. Thank God, we were, you know, had the foresight to connect our wells across the street with, in the Hamlet, because we had the hits with the PFOA, and we were able to shut those wells on and not miss a beat, so it's.
I think that's the focus over the next decade, is to get our systems interconnected and continue to develop sources.
Right, new sources.
And it's an expense, but, you know, it's an investment we have to make. So that's Four Corners. Across, so we did lose our four wells here across the street. We are looking to drill another well at Cannon. We did have a well pump temporarily go down. We were getting air in the line, and we brought our hydrogeologist out to make an assessment. And we're getting ready to put that well back into service. And we're gonna see what we have to do as far as, you know, with the air that's going in and causing turbulence in the system, so we're working through that. I think those are major, you know, projects that are going on right now. Let's just see, we do have some grant applications out for Worley and Revere, particularly for Worley, for the infrastructure within Worley. I think that's pretty much it for our current projects right now.
Does anybody?
Oh, one more project, and that's the Auditorium Drive Sewer, I'm sorry. That went out to bid. And we've signed off on all the shop drawings, and we're waiting for that contract to mobilize over the next couple of weeks to start that project.
That's the one by John Jay, right?
Yes.
That'll connect the new Amazon facility, and very important. Any questions about any water districts or any specific questions about where you're seeing work? Or expansion possibilities, anything?
The only expansion project I got, it's not, has nothing to do with us.
Have we heard back from the federal government that's building a power plant out there by?
The power grid?
Power grid thing over there.
Oh, yeah, Central Hudson's, right?
The microgrid, right?
The one that was an emergency project that they funded in 2001, and they were hoping to build it in '22. But they started after 9/11.
Yeah, they came in and gave a presentation to the board.
Heard back from them again?
No, they, it's gonna be placed over there off of Phillips. They have emergency, they have an access.
We issued a driveway permit.
We haven't heard anything else.
Since issuing the driveway permit, no, and they were very anxious for us to issue that permit.
That was a year and a half ago.
No, we issued that permit probably two months ago, six weeks to two months ago we issued that permit.
No, no longer than that?
The actual driveway permit, yeah, that's about when we issued it.
No, I meant when they gave the presentation.
Oh, that was probably a year ago.
Oh, yeah, probably a year ago. I think, yeah, pre-COVID, was it? Yeah, it was pre-COVID. Now, we talk in terms of pre and post-COVID, where there's no post-COVID. But any other questions?
The parts are probably on the boat in the Panama Canal.
You're going there, right? Any other questions about any water systems or sewer projects, anything? No? Okay, next on the agenda is pilot programs, meaning payment in lieu of taxes. So we wanted to have a discussion tonight about what a pilot program is. There's a lot of misconceptions out there that a pilot, which means payment in lieu of taxes. Some people think that that means that the property owner will not be paying taxes. That is absolutely false, not true. They will be paying taxes. They have a scheduled amount of paying taxes. That's what we enter into an agreement. And why can't just anybody get a pilot program? Well, there's certain requirements, why you have to and why you can't get it. And our attorney's gonna give us a little overview of what the pilot programs are.
I tried to squish it as much as I could squish. But I just liked, I thought we should start out with what an IDA is and how it operates so that everyone understands it. It's an industrial development agency. We're originally created by the state legislature as a way for communities to be able to help create industrial bases within the towns and villages for tax base. And originally, their major purpose was to provide low-cost financing for projects so that they would use their authority as a municipality, as a public benefit corporation, to borrow money at a lower rate, lend it to the developer to build the project and go on. Over time, it's changed and morphed in some counties. You'll find IDAs are heavily involved with the housing to provide financing, et cetera, for big housing complexes. Here in Dutchess County, the IDA is primarily used for commercial base and industrial base. So what happens is when a property owner decides to build on their property and they qualify as either an industrial or commercial base, they make a proposal to the Industrial Development Agency. That is a board, a county-wide board. It's appointed by the county executive and the county legislature. It's an independent entity with certain authority vested in them by the state legislature. So they then meet with the developer, we use that term, and the developer has to convince them that there's gonna be an economic benefit by bringing their project to the community where it's proposed. So that benefit can take many different forms. It could be a guarantee of a certain level of jobs, creation of new jobs, and guaranteed that those jobs will remain for a period of time. It can be the investment, the capital investment, a hundred-million-dollar project brings certain benefits to the community. The derivative economic impact is formulas that they look at. If you bring in 500 workers, what does that do for the general economy, stores, shops, restaurants, et cetera? Then they look at what impact it may have to the hotel industry, if it's an international or national company. Do they have people from out of state coming in, they need places to stay? So the IDA board looks at all of that, and if they decide that there is a sufficient benefit, they will issue to the developer what's known as a letter of inducement. And that says, if you do, and they list everything that's been proposed, and you do it for a period of X years, we agree to embrace your project under the auspices of the IDA. So then the IDA board has the authority to do several things. Number one, they usually can waive sales tax that would normally be collected on the materials used to develop the site.
So the building materials they would buy are sales tax-free while constructing?
They can also, in New York State, when you borrow money as a mortgage, when that mortgage is recorded with the county clerk, all of us have the privilege of paying a mortgage tax, which now is about 1.1% of the mortgage. So obviously, if you have a developer who's borrowing $50 million, that's a significant chunk of money. The IDA can waive it, reduce it, to induce this project to come. So once they've indicated that, the next phase is, the IDA, in order to be involved, either becomes the owner of the property upon which the project is being built, or they take a lease of the property and lease it back. And either way, under the New York State real property tax law, that parcel of property becomes tax-exempt and is no longer on the town or village's regular assessment roll. So absent anything else, the project wouldn't pay any taxes. But what the IDA rules and laws are, is the IDA gives the communities, primarily the school district and the town, 60 days from the letter of inducement to attempt to negotiate an agreement as to how much tax this particular project will pay. That, in the past, has been usually an agreement, say, for 15 years. A some certain paid-body property, you know, for the 15 years, that was it. Many people didn't like that because there was no increase, no adjustment, et cetera. So that's what's known as a pilot, a payment in lieu of taxes, because the property is tax-exempt. If there's no agreement, there's no tax. And so what happens is you do a contract with the developer to pay this money. It comes into the town's bookkeeping system differently than real estate taxes. Mark can explain it's treated differently. It reduces the tax levy that normally would be imposed so that when the balance of what's needed by the town and the school district is levied against everyone else's home, it's a lesser amount than the full amount, it's reduced by the amount of the pilot, okay? We in East Fishkill now, over the last year or so, have been working first with Amazon and now with the new project, Frito-Lay. We've come up with what we, what the IDA and ourselves are referring to as a deviated pilot, a deviated pilot. And the reason for that is we're breaking the mold. We're not using the traditional fixed sum for the 15 years. What our pilot is, is actually placing an assessed value on the property as if it were on a fully taxable roll. They're going to, their tax rate will be based on whatever the rest of us are gonna pay. So if the town board, God forbid, raised taxes 1%, their rate would go up to 1% just like all of us. What we are doing, and what the benefit is to them, is we're phasing in that increased assessment, going from what it is now, you know, the paltry sum that's paying either as vacant land or an industrial wasted building that's collapsing, to what it's going to be, say, at the end of 15 years. And each year, the assessed value is increasing based on the contract that we entered into. So that's what the quote, it's almost like a curse word, not some community's a pilot, but it's really the method to make sure that an otherwise tax-exempt project that's been induced by the IDA at the county level to come to Dutchess County and in East Fishkill has benefit of it.
So basically, this IDA, Industrial Development Agency, was invented by New York State to use as a vessel to make the property tax-exempt. And then that takes it off of the regular tax laws of New York State and allows them to put this payment in instead of a regular tax payment.
Correct. And I think too, that a lot of people don't understand, New York State uses assessed value of property to collect most of their taxes. Other states don't do that. Other states have other kinds of taxes. So many times, we have friends who move out of state and they say, oh, my house taxes a thousand bucks, because they have a different system, but they're paying maybe a personal property tax, like an annual payment on their cars, more significant than ours. They have different sales taxes, so there's a different way that the monies are collected in other states. So the problem there is that a company that wants to come to East Fishkill perhaps can go to Pennsylvania and pay no real property tax because of their system of taxation. And so that makes it hard to lure a company like that to stay here in New York. And so that makes it hard to lure a company like that to stay here in New York State.
Right, so obviously, New York State invented this IDA for a reason. They knew that it's difficult to lure these businesses to come here, to set up shop, to make the large investment that they, it will, uh, cost them. Uh, because they know that the benefits of them coming, like you mentioned before, the derivative, derivative economic impact to the community is better than, uh, outweighs the decrease in taxes that they would pay.
Correct. And as an example, Mark can explain, he's put together, uh, a little illustration based on the Amazon project as a way of maybe clarifying to the, the community what, what, how it works. Or, and these are just projections. These are not real numbers, uh, yet.
Yeah, because as, as Tom said, the, their pilot payment will actually fluctuate along with, uh, the, the changes in tax rates and assessments, just like every other resident and business in East Fishkill. Um, so we just did a comparison of, uh, the total tax revenue that we would collect on the parcel as it exists prior to the Amazon project and then what we expect to collect, um, once the, uh, building is in service. And, uh, without the, um, project, uh, in, in what would be classified as year one, which is a couple of years off, um, we would collect a total of $166,000 in, in property taxes. That's town, county, school, fire, library, all combined. But with the, uh, Amazon project, in year one, we'll collect an additional $408,000. So about 574 in total, 74,000. Over 15 years, uh, comparing the pro- uh, the property with the project versus as it existed previously, we would collect an additional $23 million in the equivalent of property tax or pilot revenue. Uh, and within the construction of the tax cap, you know, every dollar that they pay is a dollar less than the other residents will pay. And in that additional 23 million, um, which is 26 million less the three they would've paid otherwise, there's, for example, school taxes of, of $19 million with no students, you know, um, no increase in, in students. Uh, same thing you could say for the library.
Impact to the school district.
No impact to the school district.
Great, so they don't have to raise taxes, right?
Sure would think, huh?
So I think, you know, there is a clear economic benefit
Right.
Um, to the residents of East Fishkill by having a project there versus having nothing at all.
Right, so just to reiterate what you said, Amazon, already we, uh, agreed to the tax pilot with the IDA, Duchess County IDA, um, which they're almost completed with, uh, construction out over there. They're going very quickly. But without Amazon there, that property, uh, say, year one, would pay $166,000 in total taxes. School, county, town taxes, all combined, fire, library, for 166,000. Even at year one with the pilot program that Amazon entered into, uh, their first year, which they received their largest tax decrease in assessment, they're paying $574,000 in taxes. So the difference, like the controller said, 407,000 more than if that property was just vacant, doing nothing. So, they're spending $180 million into the community, spending millions of dollars onto infrastructure that we need and also bringing jobs, uh, a- and, and other benefits to the whole community. At, in 15 years, when the pilot is completed, uh, Amazon will be paying $26 million in taxes. And if Amazon wasn't there, the property was vacant, they would've collected 3 million in taxes total. So the difference is 23 million, and that's with a tax pilot. So, obviously, the benefits are huge. Uh, the, the, the economic benefits that help out all our small businesses. We always talk about our small business. How can we help them? This is how we help them. We bring larger companies here that have employees to go shop in those businesses. Because without customers for these small businesses, they're not gonna survive. So.
And also, we should point out, I think along your thinking, is that the traffic improvement that we're doing on 52, which is hopefully gonna resolve the drop-off problem in the morning with the high school and everything else, Amazon, in addition to everything else, is gonna contribute a million dollars on top of doing some road building, uh, of that auditorium drive connection into the back.
Which I believe was two and a half million.
Right, so that's on top of this. They're also paying for Scott, polluted too, before the sewer extension. So they're paying the cost of that, while yes, it primarily is to connect their building to it. It puts a pipe in the ground along a greater area of 52 for us to
Expand business.
Expand and, and use it. So there's all those derivative benefits that are coming, that we didn't really get into, that the project has generated. And like every other project there, whether it goes through IDA or not, they, they have to pay whatever impacts and to help with the traffic.
Right. So when people say that companies come here and they're not gonna pay their fair share of taxes, that's not true. They're lying. They're going to be paying their fair share of what they're agreed to. They have entered into an agreement with the Duchess County IDA and the town. Uh, there's strings attached to them. They have to have jobs. They have to have economic impact onto the community. So, with that, we, they're also paying a substantial amount of taxes. So it's a win-win for all the, for the whole community.
So, you know, what the community has to us to understand is that without this company, and let's not name this company Amazon, let's call it Company A. Okay, there are a lot of people that might not like Amazon for whatever reason, and that's okay. But if we did not put in place this Company A in this community, everybody else will be paying a lot higher taxes in the long run. And I just wanna say that besides these big companies, that they come and do business in this designated area, you know, this area over here, it was industrial, it's industrial. It, it's ideal for this kind of projects. If we do not have that, smaller company cannot go and do business in these communities. Because if we are able to keep our taxes low, okay? People will come and live in these communities because your property tax is gonna be a lot less taxed in the long run. So, i- it's a win-win for everybody in the community. And, uh, I just wanna say it again. The seniors that they're leaving this community, you know, right now, there's the baby boomers. That's one of the largest crowd of people that are about to retire, they're about to retire. I talk to them every day, people in the town. We stop and talk. And usually, they'd be moving out of the community because of the taxes. Now, having said all that, if all the other agencies in the community, and I'm gonna say this again, especially the school district, which is the biggest absorbent of all our taxes, even as we saw the numbers, the biggest recipient of this tax goes to the schools. If they incentivize reducing costs, it, it would be unbelievable what we could do in East Fishkill. So, I hope that this clarifies a lot of the issues that people have.
And Manny, you make a very good point that I, I think we shouldn't, uh, miss, is that we don't choose what company comes. We, we're out there, we're asking people to come look at us, you know, the town board put in some creative zoning to help, uh, redevelop that site. Uh, we make outreaches, we go, but, you know, we can't drag anyone in. And we don't, uh, know until they're, they're here whether they're going to the IDA or not. We play no role. We don't say to them, oh, go to the IDA first. They know what they need to do to do it. So, the companies, uh, you know, we can't be accused of like, uh, bringing in a company secretly. That's not our style and that's not our right. And all of the companies choose us. We can't choose them.
And the other, uh, great point is that what we are putting over there is a variety of different companies.
Yes.
Before, we dealt with IBM. And when IBM shut their doors, it was detrimental to this community.
We have great diversity.
So, if, uh, 15 years from now, somebody decides to leave East Fishkill, you're only replacing that one parcel. Everybody else is still paying taxes.
Very important.
It's a continuous flow of money coming into our, to Mark's account.
Correct.
And, uh,
The town's account.
A great benefit to everybody.
We get your picture done.
Tom, I just wanna be clear on something and for everyone to know. So Amazon, they don't go to the town for the pilot. They have to go to the IDA, correct?
Right. What happens is, once they get the approval of the IDA and at the letter of inducement,
Right.
then there's a clock that starts 60 days that Amazon has to come to the town and say, we're gonna use the IDA, it's gonna go tax exempt. Let's talk what we're, what we'll pay. And, and we, then work something out. If we don't, then the IDA has the authority to just mandate that this is the payment you're gonna get.
And the town has no authority to say, no, we don't want any pilots?
Well, if we said no pilots, then the IDA could overrule us and just allow it.
We have no authority to remove what's already there.
Correct, correct.
And just so everybody understands, uh, when these big companies come here, obviously, there's, uh, they're, they're investing a substantial investment in our community. Uh, they look at many sites. They, I mentioned this before, uh, and, uh, are the previous project that was completed, that we, uh, completed the pilot agreement with them. They looked at, uh, at three other sites, including our town. And, uh, one was in Pennsylvania, one was in New Jersey, one in Connecticut, and one here in New York. Four different states, uh, within a mile radius, eh, within each other. And they looked at, uh, uh, East Fishkill. Without a pilot, we were at $4 and change per square foot. That would've cost them for their, the size of their building. Uh, other sites were at 99 cents a square foot, at $2 a square foot, $1.50 a square foot. So, if you are a, a company looking to make an investment, why would you go to the highest when you could go somewhere else and have the same, uh, uh, pretty much access to the highways and everything else that we have? So, if, eh, there's a larger, there's a bigger picture here that we have to make sure that everybody understands. We're trying to lure businesses to come here and, and build in our community because of all the derivative economic, uh, factors. So, it's, it's important to say that.
And maybe this is a good jump-off point. I know it's a little off the, but the transparency issue. Uh, these companies name their projects, like Project Niagara, and then we had Blue Water, I believe the Amazon was. When they go to the
Redtail.
Redtail. When they go to the IDA, and they're negotiating. And they don't want a competitor of theirs to know that they're in Duchess County, you know, negotiating because they don't want somebody else to say, oh, if they're going in Duchess, let's us go in and try to undercut. So it's just like any real estate transaction. There's a part of it that's, you know, now. But that transparency ends the moment they start seeking an approval. So many times, the supervisor spends time, people come in to do their due diligence, whether they're building, uh, five lot, five houses or 650,000 square foot warehouse. A lot of times, people come in, they don't know the town, they wanna get a feel for the town. They wanna know the, uh, you know, initial throw at the wall, what are some of your thoughts, you know?
What are the costs, whatever?
Yeah, yeah, you know, this is all a wet area. You're probably not gonna be able to do water, sewer, all of these things, they gather. It's their due diligence. So it's that, those discussions, which are not commitments, are not approvals, are not binding, that they like to keep confidential when it's a big company coming in. Because there's competition for all these companies. Even Amazon has competition. It's all out there. So, I don't think the public should get the idea that anything's done behind the scenes. When it comes to the town board and it's announced and it's referred, that's when the hard look and the official review process starts, at that moment. And that's what we did the other night. We accepted the application of the current project that's coming in, Frito-Lay, and referred it, and now starts a open, transparent process, um, you know. And it may get approved, it may not get approved. That's all yet to be seen.
And that's a very good point, Tom, that you're making because there are times that the town supervisor knew of something happening and not even the town board was told exactly what this project was until, like you said,
The company knew the company was.
The company made the announcement and they were sure that that was the site that it wanted to use. So even us, board member, did not know until, let's say, probably a week or 10 days prior to making an announcement that this was actually happening. That's the process in place, so.
They make assigned, uh, non-disclosure agreements.
And particularly the bigger the company, when they're exchange, you know, stocks on the stock exchange, they're regulated by the SEC and all those other agencies. There's all kinds of things they have to do with those agencies before they can really go forward. And they, you know, they don't wanna look foolish if they came out and said, we're going to East Fishkill, and then through that process, they're shot down. The investors?
Sure. And like I said, they make assigned non-disclosure agreements, not only the town, the county, other agencies that are involved.
They wouldn't deal with us.
They wouldn't deal with us.
They would go somewhere else.
It's, it's, you know, I'm so excited to have some of these projects come. I'm, I'm, you know, dying to say who they are. I, I would, I would say it as, as quickly as I can, but, uh, keep in mind that we do so because we are under a legal agreement that we can't say.
But we're in the big leagues. I like to say it's the big leagues, you know? If you're playing the minors, you, you can do things your way. But when you're dealing with Amazon, PepsiCo, and companies, Global Foundry, you're in the big leagues. And if you're in the big leagues, you gotta play in that playing field. And that's exactly what town of East Fishkill has done. It's stepped up to be in the major leagues when it's attracting redevelopment to this industrial site. So for anybody who thinks anything is off-color and inappropriate or whatever, you're in the minor leagues. You're not up in the major league yet. So, that's just.
And, uh, you know, being accused that there is a prize at the end of the stick if a big project counted as down, there is no such thing. Our, our winning prize is what we offer the community in tax, tax, uh, reduction. That is what we really strive for. And that was, if people go back years ago when we started this process, there was the all intent behind doing this, to make sure that our taxes stay low for everybody in the community.
Right. And the diversity of uses there is really so we're, we were a one-horse town for two decades, three decades. And then they said, sayonara, and left us. And they left a very damaged site. You know, there's part of the site that they, you can't dig down under the ground. You can only go out. You can only keep the buildings that are there. It's public records. It's nothing that hasn't been dealt with. So, you know, at least this way, if Amazon goes, we still got the other companies. If, uh, you know, they go, we got Amazon. So, it's a more balanced economic flow. It's gonna help us, I think, when Mark goes out to the bonding market for projects. We have a very diverse tax base, which is what investors are looking for when they buy our miniscule.
For sure. It's one of the key ingredients to our high tax rating and they've indicated that it'll go higher based, if all this stuff comes to fruition, the expectation is that it'll improve our tax, uh, movies rating.
You said that IDA takes title to the property, or however you want to word that.
Right.
Okay, what happens if Amazon goes in there and contaminates the land? Amazon's still liable for that.
Oh, yeah, they, they have all indemnification agreements, everything like that, yeah. IBM contaminated the land, and even though they're not there, they're still responsible for some of the remediation.
In perpetuity.
In perpetuity, it's still going on.
Now, but 15 years, this, this IDA agreement's good for 15 years. In 15 years, does that mean if they decide to stay for 20, they go to full assessment at 15?
Correct. They will be under our, our agreement. In 15 years, they're
They'll be a full assessment.
And the other great thing about these revenue coming in is that we, as, uh, board members, are able to plan the future of the town as far as putting together some projects that we could not put together before. Because we know that there is a certain amount of taxation coming into our, our, our revenue share. So.
And we're also avoiding some expenses. When these big, uh, big buildings, et cetera, come in and they think their assessments do high, um, and they bring what's known as a tax sorcery, which any of us can do as property owners. Uh, for a house, you know, the appraisal is, uh, a thousand bucks. We get an appraisal, you get appraisal, we figure it out. But on these companies, to have them value these sized buildings, it, it could cost the town 150, $200,000 for an appraisal. Um, and if they do that frequently, this way, with the pilot mechanism, it, it calms that down and keeps it that we're not gonna have those situations. So that's more of a derivative benefit. Because if you do get a tax sorcery and the property owner wins and you have to pay back money, that's paid out of all our pockets.
property owner wins, and you have to pay back money, that's paid out of all our pockets. So, you know, it's a lot of issues here. And when certain people say you're not creating real jobs, these people have invested 100 million dollars, somebody built that facility over there. If somebody could tell me that a construction company and the workers that they work, they didn't make a good salary, I would say right now that's, that's not true. You know, you're in construction, you know how much money you make.
I went out with the town engineer and even though he almost killed me, he put me off. I'd say there had to be 300 people on that site of World Trades, electricians, wireless, this concrete work.
Carpenters.
All over the site, and that's going to be for two full years, right? I mean, so if you can't say that's not a shot.
A real job.
That's the big leagues.
Yeah, yeah.
They're only.
Big leagues, yeah.
They're only able to get their parts because they're ordering through Amazon Prime. I need to truckload wood with Amazon Prime.
So there, you know, that, that was important to have this discussion about what a pilot is, a tax pilot, explained correctly so the, the public understands better and, and know why New York State would come up with this invention of, of an IDA and a tax pilot, because they know that they are trying to lure these companies to, to make significant investment here. So, thank you, thank you very much.
I'm sure we're going to have more of that conversation.
I'm sure we will, next, next, next town board meeting, but we're in the process right now of negotiating with Frito-Lay for their pilot, and I'd like to thank the comptroller, the town attorney, our, our assessor, we're in the midst of it, and it's, it's going to be very, very beneficial to our community, so thank you. Thank you. So with that, any other comments from any other board members? Do you have any comments, anything about the storm or?
Thanks to all our first responders.
Highway Department. Yeah, the Highway Department's been very busy, actually, our Highway Superintendent's not here tonight, he.
Getting some sleep.
Well, just a couple hours ago, I know he was meeting with the contractor, who is actually the DOT contractor over at the bridge site, they're trying to help them with some material as well that they're taking offsite where they can store it, so he was working with them. And, yeah, it's been a lot of sleepless nights for, for our Highway Department, they've been doing a phenomenal job. I am very appreciative, appreciative about all their hard work. And our next town board meeting is on September 23rd. There is a public hearing at 6, I'm sorry, at 6:00 PM instead of 7:00 PM before our meeting. There will be a joint public hearing with the planning board for a project at IPAR for the Frito-Lay. And just a couple days to remember, this Saturday is the 9/11 ceremony, which East Fishkill does, it will be at 5:00 PM at, right by the Davis House, we have a, a stage set up there for where we've been hosting all our summer concert series there, that will be at 5:00 PM this Saturday for the 9/11 ceremony. And then next Saturday, 9/18, is Community Day, so please be out there, we have, we have a lot to do, it's our 25th anniversary, and I think it's going to be a lot of fun, right?
Good day.
Yeah, it'll be a great day.
Lot of magic we have at the end.
It's always a magical day.
It's a magical day. Never rains on Community Day.
No, well, this year's a little more special, right? Correct, it's our 25th anniversary.
25th anniversary.
We're going to have a, a large, a large fireworks show at the end of the day, we have a parade in the, in the beginning of the day, what time is the parade, Peter?
2 o'clock.
2 o'clock. And usually all our sports teams are included in there, right?
A lot, long parade, should be about an hour, we hope, a lot of marchers, a lot of diff, all the fire departments are coming, we're ending the day with a magic show and then a magis, then fireworks.
And what about, what other organizations attend usually, not all non-for-profits?
All non-for-profits, a lot of the schools, churches, everybody.
And businesses, a lot of businesses come, they have booths.
Support, different booths, local groups and booths.
Schools, lots of students there.
Lots of students.
Yeah.
Should be a good day, could be a big day.
Yeah.
Go find a peer at the cotton candy booth.
We don't have cotton candy booths. We've seen a cotton candy booth.
Are you bringing your red truck to the parade?
My red truck will be there, don't you worry.
Oh, Councilman, didn't you have something to say about roads, the Highway Superintendent wanted you to make a.
So, yeah, what I wanted to say is that we've been paving some roads, unfortunately with the last week's storm.
Weather's been tough this year.
Right, that put the Highway Department a little bit to.
Behind.
It was unexpected to spend some money that unfortunately we had to take care of the community. They still working, I mean, I spoke a couple of times today to the Highway Superintendent, they're still trying to catch up, clean up. And so they've put aside a couple of projects they had intended to do, and I know there's certain people in the community, they say, when is my area being paved? And whenever I can, I respond that, you know, we will get eventually there, but when you have emergency situation, that takes a priority. I mean, when people are underwater, the way that, you know, or you lose a bridge in the community and people cannot access in and out of their property, that's, takes priority for everybody. So right now, that's where we're at, we are not forgetting that we still have something that we have to take care of, but we will see how, financially, how we're doing right after the situation, and then we'll reassess and, you know, take care of whatever we could after this. So, yeah, can I continue or is there somebody else that? The other thing that I want to say is, again, excellent job by our local police department and our fire departments, they've been working together. And our town supervisor, I know he told me that he, somebody woke him up at 1:00 and he didn't go to sleep until the next night.
That was the night of the storm.
So he was running around, and, you know, a great job, unfortunately, we responded, there is very little that we could do, but whatever we could do, we took care of the issues and we took care of our community. And I just feel that we are blessed to be working together and even with our, this town board and whatever we're doing to really put in place things that will benefit everybody. I mean, it, it's amazing, and I usually tell people, few years from now, you will see the fruits of our labor. I mean, sometimes you can't really assess now, but I, I foresee that five years from now, this town, if things are kept in place and you have smart people doing the planning, we will be in great shape, God willing.
Anybody else have any other comments?
Just a quick shout out to our fire department, they still get all the text messages for the calls, and even though this is not their job to pump out basins, they've done, they've done over like 200 of them so far since the storm, and that's a great service they offer to our town, and they're still doing them to this day, there's at least one or two that come each day. So thank you to our fire department for, you know, they've done to serve our community and of course our crews, having a great job. Early the next morning after the storm, I went to go check out the bridge that collapsed, and the town supervisor was already there like a second time that morning.
We were out early.
So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, and so.
Just thanks to all the people that worked that day, and we should also probably take a moment of silence for State Trooper Mole, who's from Hopewell originally, and his two brothers are state troopers, state trooper that passed away in Connecticut during the storm, was swept away from the storm.
Peter, you mentioned stuff about Community Day, you're right?
Yep. And, and just to reiterate.
We canceled it.
This, this Saturday, 9/11, our, our September 11 ceremony, 5:00 PM at the Davis House, that's the field, by the large field in the, in the main rec field here behind us, and Saturday, 9/18, is Community Day. And please, like I mentioned in my comments, go on our website for Dutchess County, and please, if you had any damages, any businesses, any homeowners, any renters, please fill out that portal for, so we can get the FEMA declaration, disaster declarations, very important that we've reached the threshold that everybody could get compensated back, so please, please.
Making calls, before you close, I just want to say one other thing. So, like I mentioned before in a previous meeting, there is a crisis going on, and the workforce is not there for our small business community. I said it before, there are a lot of jobs available at all levels, especially our store owners, I mean, if you look at the media, many people right now cannot stay open the way that we're staying open before. They are forced to close one or two days a week because they cannot handle the, the amount of business that is available. And we have to really work together, I mean, right now, I see it, I, I go to get supplies for my store and it's not available. I hope that this doesn't continue because we're all, we're all in this together, and we need to really start thinking, can I take a part-time job someplace? Because right now, it's not just making the, the $15 an hour or $20 an hour, it's just helping our community stay alive. So please, whoever could, try to take a job at a local level whenever you can, and hopefully we'll be in better shape next year.
God willing. Okay, with that, like I said, our next town board meeting is September 23rd, 2021, and a meeting adjourned, thank you.